Hello, this is Sarah Conrad Baronowski. I'm editor of the Iowa Falls Time Citizen. And I'm joined today by Micah Cutler and Steve Klein. They are two candidates who are running for Iowa Falls City Council. There is a third candidate running, Corey Brannick, but he declined to participate in Time Citizen campaign coverage. So we're talking to Micah and Steve today. I have a set of questions for you. I'm just going to run through those and I don't want to take up too much of your time, so we'll get started right away. Micah, I'll start with you. Could you introduce yourself? Tell us a little about who you are, your occupation, and why you decided to run for city council?
Sure. So my name is Micah Cutler. I have lived in Iowa Falls for about 16 years. We moved here in the mid 2000s. We came here because of jobs. And I raised two boys here with my husband Brad. Our youngest is now a senior in high school and our oldest is a student at Ellsworth and is a member of the National Guard. And I have always worked in the field of GIS. For those that don't know what GIS is, it's Geographic Information Systems. And I usually tell people I make maps, but it's databases, maps, technology, asset management, that sorts of thing. And my background is actually in geography. I got a bachelor's from the University of Northern Iowa, when I was straight out of high school. And then I went on and got my master's in geography at the University of South Carolina before my husband and I moved back to Iowa. And so why I decided to run? Well, I ran four years ago, so that's when the seed was first planted. And that was probably a little bit of a whim. But obviously, it turned out to be more of a whim because here I am again throwing my hat into the ring. And it really is for me about serving public service. I have worked as the GIS director in local county government for nearly 20 years. I worked in Hardin County and Franklin County here before becoming the IT Director and GIS Director for Hardin County. And I really enjoy being a public employee. I really enjoy working in the public sector. But I've taken a new position in an engineering company, so I'm on the private side now. And I found that I really missed public service. And so running to be on city councils is a way to kind of scratch that itch where I really like to serve the public and volunteer my time. And with my boys getting older and becoming adults now, I feel like I have the time to devote to an endeavor like being on the city council. And I've taken so many advantages of being in, living in Iowa Falls that I feel like now is my turn to have to give back and donate some time and leadership to the community.
Great. Steve, could you introduce yourself? Tell us a little bit about you, what you do, and then why you decided to run for reelection? Because you're actually finishing out your first term on the council.
Correct. I'm Steve Klein. I've been a lifelong resident of Iowa Falls for 65 years now with a couple of years out when I was attending college down Ames. I'm running again because I really believe that four years doesn't really get you where you need to go. You just started to learn how things work. I feel like I got a little better handle on how things do work, so that's why I'm running again, so I can continue on and contribute. A little bit about me, I Vice President and General Manager of Pro Enterprises here in town. I served six years on the school board back in the 90s when I had a child in each building, which seemed like an appropriate time to run for that board. I've always believed in trying to give back to the community. This community is near and dear to my heart because I've lived here my whole life and I think a lot of what it has to offer. And I just hope in some way that I can give back to the community that's given so much to me through the years. Starting clear back in high school when the community came up with enough money to send me off to be an AFSC student. So, community gives, I try to give back. That's kind of where that all comes from. Otherwise, you know, I don't know what else to add to that.
You don't have to add anything else if you don't want to. Steve, we'll start with you on this next question. What do you think are the two most pressing issues facing the city right now? And how would you propose that the city address them? Does the council have a role in addressing those issues?
Well, I think, I've made no bones about it, that infrastructure, basically water and water and wastewater are two important things for us. If we are to land any more larger industrial type companies that can bring jobs to the community, we're pushing up against the limits of our wastewater facility. And we're also in need of some new wells to keep our water supply as active as it can be. We have two big water users, Cargill and Polet. And new ones coming that would have a definite need for more water. And we've just got old wells. Our old number one well that was kicking out a lot of water was doing over 1,000 gallons a minute. Now it's down below below 300. It's in the 200 range. So, some of those are replacements and we also need to find new sources. And the other thing that's important right now is housing. We have a shortage of housing. When prospective businesses come to town, one of the questions they ask is where can the people live? We see that you don't have a lot of available places to purchase or rent. So that's something that the city is going to work with IFADC and our strategic plan to try to move forward and find some some solutions to that. And there's lots of different ones out there. Working with private contractors, we've got people outside interested in coming in and doing some different things. To me, that's two biggest issues that are facing the city right now.
Okay, Micah, same question to you. What do you think are the two most pressing issues facing the city right now? And how would you propose, sorry, how would you propose the city address them and what role does the council have in that?
Oh goodness. Well, I feel like I'm going to be echoing Steve a little bit because, you know, I think we're all pretty aware that our infrastructure is aging. And I know that there's a lot of concern right now with the capacity of the wastewater treatment facility. And it's the same story across Iowa. A lot of the infrastructure is reaching about that 100-year mark. And the needs and the aging of the pipes is just, you know, I know when they dug up the streetscape project, they found all kinds of surprises and pretty old infrastructure under the road. And so that's, and then housing is always, you know, we moved here in 2006 and we looked at 18 houses before we found one. And we were looking at fairly modest, you know, $80,000 price points. And there was not a lot of options. And here we are 16 years later and I still don't think there's a lot of options in certain price points. And I think really important that the community have, you know, housing needs at different levels for different, you know, people who want to build, people who are growing families, new starter home with different kinds of income levels. And I see it as a real problem. I mean, we struggled tremendously finding a place to live. And I hear that same story. And then with the volatility, the housing market, even in rural Iowa, it's even a little crazier. And I've sat on the Planning and Zoning Commission for quite a number of years. I don't even know how long. I want to say seven or eight years. And, you know, there's been several things that I've come across the Planning and Zoning Commission in terms of housing developments and planned zoning needs for multifamily housing or single-family housing. And there's been some growth in that area, but I think there definitely has to be some improvement. Because it's also really important to engrow the tax base or continue to maintain the tax base in the city of Iowa Falls. You know, we have a lot of development that happens just outside the corporate limits. And that's fantastic for building community, but unfortunately their tax dollars don't exactly go into helping run the infrastructure that the city needs. And I think the city council, you asked about the role they play. And, you know, I heard a lot about communication recently in the city council meetings that I've attended. And I think that's, you know, helping educate the public on why this need and that this need is not a new need, both for housing, the infrastructure and where money has to be spent and why the city is looking in certain directions. I think sometimes people don't pay attention. Well, I know people don't pay attention until it affects them directly. And I think we need to keep city issues aren't very exciting until they directly affect you. And so I think that constant education and reminding people that there's a reason behind all the choices that city council is making and that there's a plan. This isn't a willy-nilly whim decisions that are being made. And there's a history that each city council and the city staff are like working towards. There's some common goals that are laid out. And I think communicating goes a long way. You know, when people don't understand something and then I've seen it with the city council members begin talking one-on-one with someone and explaining some of the history that's gone into why those decisions are being made, you can kind of see people beginning to understand there's a lot of factors that a lot of individuals are just unaware of. And they just don't know all the moving parts. You know, Steve, you mentioned economic development. And I think there's a lot of confusion about the role of economic development in a community and how vital it is to have all the pieces, the businesses, the workers, the housing for the workers, the amenities for the businesses, the infrastructure. It's just a lot of moving parts.
So I'm actually going to, because you brought up communication, I had a question about that. So I'm just going to skip ahead and do that one so I can kind of stay on this theme. And Micah, I'll stay with you. And for warning, I'm not expecting you to like solve this problem, although if you do, it'd be great. Because I know lots of people are worried about this issue. But do you think the city has trouble reaching residents or that residents have trouble learning about what's happening with the city? And how do you think the city, the residents, the community, maybe even the newspaper could address that issue? How do we open up communication between the city, whether that's employees or the council and the residents? Do you have ideas for how that might be achieved?
Okay, so I do. This is actually a topic that I'm really get into. First of all, I love the fact we have an active local newspaper. So however someone might feel about any given story that the newspaper is covering, I love seeing local reporters at all the events that I go to, both in the city, my kids in school, and how vital that is to any community. I've seen a news or magazine article or online blogs about the loss of local papers and what that does to community and disseminating information. I mean, just seeing how the USA Today became part of the Des Moines Register changes the flavor of the Des Moines paper. And so I don't mean to evangelize, but I do love that we have a local paper that's paying attention and communicating. However, I think people have a tendency to rely on third-party private enterprises to disseminate information, whether that be a newspaper that does usually, you know, cost money to get that information. You either have to buy the paper, you have to subscribe. There is some kind of a paywall barrier. Or there's a reliance on technology today of social media, whether it be Twitter, whether it be Facebook. And I think people forget those are private platforms. And that it's important to not rely on just private platforms for disseminating information. I think the city really has to take more ownership of the information that they're disseminating. And I think some of the things that we can control, like email. I know people think, oh, email, so, you know, 1998. But, you know, that is one of the most ways you can directly give information to entity. Someone can choose to sign up for email. And some may say, well, everybody, you know, you'd be hard pressed to find, most of the public doesn't have access to email. You know, I would dare say, you know, 90% of our constituents have smartphone, a tablet, or a computer. Even with the aging population, I see it all the time. They're more technologically savvy than we give that generation credit for. You know, the website, the city has a pretty good website, but I think there's a lot of places that could be improved upon. And that is a low barrier to the public to get information. If you have access to a computer at the library or a smartphone, you can read that information if it's on a public entity's website. And then I think that there's, I think some of the information that the city is putting out needs to be in a way, put out in a way that's better consumed by the public. So I'm Joe Q Public and that's what I am right now. And I have been frustrated going to city council meetings in the past and even recently, where I walk in and I'm handed an agenda and I have no idea what is going on. And I'm a pretty educated person, is pretty savvy on local government and how things run. But I don't always know the history. And I don't think the city council has to start at the beginning every time they bring up a topic. But I think that they could do maybe a little better job of making sure that people understand where they are in a phase of these decisions and what's building this decision versus previous meetings or previous phases of a plan. And so I think some information could be disseminated to the public a little better. Not just publishing an agenda, but maybe some supplemental information. As the IT Director in Hardin County, I was kind of right there when we started recording and disseminating the board supervisor meetings and putting more supplemental information with the agenda items ahead of time so that someone can read through some of these changes that are going to be considered at a public meeting. So they can walk in with more information than just a title on an agenda. So I think there's ways to put out information that could help educate people so that they aren't finding out decisions after the fact, either through reading a newspaper article or through the minutes. And it's just a constant struggle. And I've seen the other side of it. You give an inch, they want a mile. And if you start putting out information and then sometimes you don't, then you really get called on that. But I think that's a small price to pay to be more transparent. And then at the last city council meeting, Michelle Greed brought up maybe doing some kind of informal listening posts kind of ideas in the community, whether it be coffee shops or in areas and just making yourself available, not just in the evening at a particular time, one Monday a month, which could be, you know, impossible for some people to attend a meeting, whether they have other obligations or work or children or whatever. I thought that was really an intriguing idea that she brought up. And so that availability and approachability is kind of really important too. And sometimes you just, I know, Steve, you could probably educate me a lot about how you think you're putting out all this information, people just aren't listening. So you can lead a horse to water.
Right, yeah. Same question to you, Stephen. I know this has been a discussion topic at city council meetings. Just kind of a frustration for the council and also residents have been frustrated too. So do you have ideas for how to open up some of that communication?
Well, you know, that has been a struggle. As you mentioned, we've had conversation about upgrading the website to get more information posted on it. That would be a good place. As Mike indicated, if we post the agenda, maybe we do some addendums to that agenda under certain items, explaining a little bit more about what that's about. Council members get a full package that's, you know, inches thick with all the background information on all of the topics so that we can be better informed as to what we're discussing. Now, that's almost impossible to put out to the public. It's a lot of information. But some of that, I could see some bullet points maybe going below the agenda items on the website. Newspaper, I think, does a good job of getting the information out. However, we've had numerous residents at meetings say, well, I don't read the newspaper. So is that on you or is that on me, you know? The frustration a lot of times is we put a lot of information out and people either choose not to go there to find the information or just, you know, if it's not on Facebook, I don't know it. You know, I don't want to know it. And of course, Facebook always has a bit of a slant to it. As Mike pointed out, the private dissemination of that information on all the different social media sites is skewed at best on a lot of the information that goes out there. So, public forums on big issues like we've done back in August on River Road, that's a good way to get some information out. We still struggle with getting all of the information out. The way we'd like to get the information out, I don't know. It's, you know, like I said, you can lead a horse to water. But we definitely can make some improvements. And, you know, I'm always open to talk to anybody that's got a question. I've got an email that's out there. They can email me, ask me a question. And I try to make myself available when I'm out and about. But it's a tough one because I don't think we can begin to hit every media outlet that different people are looking at for their information.
Yeah. Well, I didn't think you were going to solve the problem today, but I thought we'd take a stab at it, right? Steve, we'll start with you on this next one. Sometimes what's best for the community may not align with your personal beliefs or feelings as a city council member. How do you balance the two and how do you decide how to vote?
That's a really good question because sometimes it gets a little bit uncomfortable when you're on the council and you're discussing things and trying to make a decision. I think to move forward, it's important to show unity on the council. However, we've had some people vote against the majority when they feel really strongly about something. I think if you become more informed, it's less likely to be totally opposed to something once you know more information. That's on me as a council member to dig out that information and find out. I think I abstained from a vote once that I just didn't agree with. It's hard to do that and make a difference, but sometimes you just got to vote against it just to state your opinion. But just because I don't agree with it doesn't necessarily mean it's right or it's wrong. It may be against what I personally think the direction should be, but if if there's consensus among the others and any information you get from other people that says, hey, that's probably the best bet we've got right now. We should go that direction. You have to weigh all that together to come up with your vote. And, you know, I'll stand by my vote whenever I make it. So people got questions asking.
Great. Same question to you, Micah. How do you balance personal opinions or beliefs with issues that may come up before the council?
I think, I've actually, you know, I've never been in an elected position like a council or supervisors, but I've been a public employee forever. It feels like, or was. I mean, I do work for a private company now. So I've had a lot and a lot of experience with working with elected officials and not necessarily agreeing with the decisions that they're making. And I have a lot of experience of working with everyone from all political parties in local government because you have to. That's how you build consensus and that's how you you actually accomplish things. If everyone had their own interests in the foreground, you wouldn't ever agree to anything because it would all be like me, me, me. And I see that with the current council that people are putting the city first. And I think that is why there's a lot of consensus because Steve's right. You think you know something and then you talk to other people and you get educated by the city staff or the public and you start to see like if you're really keeping what's best for the community at the forefront, that there is usually a natural progression towards the best conclusion, which in itself is usually a compromise. You know, the best with what you have at the time. I have a feeling most city council decisions are based on that. The best that you can do at the time, whether the constraints be time, money, budgets, personnel, resources, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and I've worked with many boards of supervisors that come in with no idea of how local government works. And part of my job is to help them understand that how, as a staff person, our role in serving the public is to educate the elected officials. And so I think it's important to always work. And usually if I feel strongly about something, it's based on either my experience, my knowledge, facts. And so you hope to communicate that. And everyone else has the same kind of, you know, their own experiences. And it's about communicating and just being open and realizing that people come to decisions because of their experiences, which can vary widely. I'm always impressed on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have such a great range of people. We have large landowners in the community and then people like me that own one little lot. So I feel like sometimes I'm the voice for the person who could like almost reach out and touch their neighbor because our lots are so small. And we have people who have building and roofing experience and someone who's a realtor. And there's just all these different backgrounds that goes into planning and zoning and things that. And it's wonderful because you can bring all that collective experience together to make some really good discussion and recommendations as a whole. And I can see the city council operating in the same way.
Can I add one quick, Sarah?
Yeah, absolutely.
I've always felt that if you have an agenda and that's why you're running for council, then that's the wrong reason to run for any elected body is if you're running on an agenda, a personal agenda that you want to accomplish. Because it's all about service to the community, not service to yourself.
Right, yeah.
Well said, Steve. And there are lots of issues that come up that are probably off that agenda if you have them. So we're going to start with Mike on this one. The proposal to turn 58 acres of city-owned land along River Road into a housing development has drawn some fire in recent months. Where do you stand on the proposal? If you're in favor, how do you think public opinion about it could be turned around? And if you're opposed, what role do you think the city should play, if any, in promoting residential development inside city limits?
Okay, so I'm just going to state by saying I'm going to sound really wishy-washy. Right? So most of what, I mean, I know it's not fair, but most of what I know about the development is from reading the paper, same as the public. So I don't feel like I have any additional information than just somebody who has been reading the paper. So I know there's things I don't know. And I swear to God, I can just see both sides of this. So here's the thing. If infrastructure is being built out in that direction, that is usually the single biggest factor in where housing is put up, a large amount, like a subdivision where you have a group of housing. And if that infrastructure is being pushed in that direction for reasons such as a well, it makes sense that the city would maybe want to capitalize on that big investment of putting infrastructure in that direction. That totally makes sense to me. I also love to run on River Road and I get the whole curvy road, beautiful. Like every time I run down that road, I just think I'm so lucky I get to do this. This is the kind of place I would run or walk on a vacation. So like, I get that. I also would love to live on River Road, you know, like lots of people. It's really beautiful. And so the idea that more people should be able to get to live on River Road, that's great. That's an amenity for the community. It's very attractive to people who both live here now and might be moving here. But we don't want to change River Road. I mean, I'm all over the place. I know this. One of the solutions, and this may, Steve, this is my ignorance, I just don't know. You know, maybe lot size is a solution. Maybe some housing, but not lots of housing. But then that doesn't address housing needs at a certain price point. It may just make really, really expensive houses that the majority of people can't afford and doesn't solve some of our housing needs. I have seen subdivisions, okay, so I work for an engineering and surveying company, lots of civil engineers. And they have worked with several communities in building subdivisions that are basically city-owned and developed. And it has worked out really well for some of these communities. And so I've seen that approach. Iowa Falls is not unique in doing this. This has been done in lots of rural communities. It's a way to spur development to ensure that utilities and infrastructure is going to be built and to get housings sold. So I don't think Iowa Falls should be criticized for trying to take that approach because it has been very successful. How's that for a completely non-answer?
Well, and I hesitated to write this answer just because it is such a complex issue. And it's so controversial right now also. But I think it's a big, it's a big conversation. And in this conversation already with the three of us, I think you've both brought up housing. And so, you know, this I think should be part of the conversation. So Steve, same question to you. Do you want me to repeat it or do you get the gist? Okay. The proposal to turn 58 acres of city-owned land along River Road into a housing development has drawn fire in recent months. Where do you stand on the proposal? If you're in favor, how do you think public opinion might be turned around? And if you're opposed, what role do you think the city should play, if any, in promoting residential development inside city limits?
Okay, that is a kind of a question of the hour, question of the year this year. And to set this up a little bit, the city didn't go into this blindly thinking, well, I'm just going to buy a piece of ground. We're going to throw a bunch of houses on it. We're going to solve our problems. We have studied what Humboldt did to develop an area where they owned it and they sold off the lots and they ran infrastructure. Uh, where they owned it and they sold off the lots and they ran infrastructure and it just continued to expand and expand. And they got a lot of nice homes along uh, the Des Moines River over there. We were looking at any way to try to spur development in our area. We're not gonna build the homes. Uh, we're gonna sell the lots. The person who bought his lot is gonna uh, build the home. Uh, we'll supply some infrastructure, but let's, let's back up a little bit. We need a well. Before we bought, the city bought the Palisades, uh, fifty eight acres. We were testing well sites all over the city that had been examined by uh. Specialists on locating this kind of uh, what the best place to drill is. We did a bunch of test drilling. The best one, even though it wasn't super great, was out at Weaver's Cove. But it responded much the same way as the other one on River Road that's a little closer to the plant. And uh, proposal proposals are that it will be a better. A better well than first indicated. So that's, that's one thing. We've had residents along River Road, contrary to popular opinion, that have contacted the city and said, when are you bringing? Uh, water and sewer out my way, because I'm gonna sell this house and I gotta put in a septic to sell it. And I don't want to do that. If you're coming out, you're gonna hook me up. So there's those questions. Uh, my priority is council. Well, and let's point out that uh, Roger made a motion. And I seconded, we passed this, kind of slowed the roll on the whole project out there. But to me, the well and the River Road uh, utilities. Are one issue. Palisades is a different issue. Uh, am I in favor of the city owning ground and and developing it? Not really. I don't think that's our role, but. Nothing was happening. We were trying to spur something and goodness knows, we have spurred some conversation and started some things. And that has led to some good conversations with uh, uh. Local realtors and local contractors about how we can work together to try to get some of this stuff done. So that's a good thing. But basically, uh, what bothers me the most is the misconception that we're gonna ruin River Road. Um, if we put a well there and we gotta run raw water to Elfrin Treatment Plant. Then as long as we've got a, an opening in the ground, we just will run water and sewer back out. The details of how that affects the residents along there have to be worked out and has to be done fairly. So people don't incur a lot of expense if they don't want to participate in it. Those are all things that need to be discussed and worked out. Uh, there's nothing set in stone. There is no, you know, miss, there's misinformation on the cost. Uh, the well's been pegged at one point five million when basically we're getting a lot of it uh, free with grant money. So it gets back to the communication. How do we get this information out? Um, then legal representation gets involved and then it muddies the water with uh, what council told or what they can say and what they can't say. And you know, I just don't like any of it, but River Road will not be ruined. The River Road needs resurfacing. And if we can widen it a little bit, so there's a little more room for people out there jogging to not get run over as they go around a curve. I think that would be a good thing. Uh, I don't think it would ruin the look of the, of the scenic River Road. I think it would improve it. We got a lot of bicyclists and a lot of runners and joggers and walkers that use that road. As we do on Cylon as well. Um, and both of those are kind of dangerous because they're narrow. And I've had people that drive both of them for going and coming to work. And uh, they'd like something done on both of them to at least make it a little more user friendly for the pedestrians and bicyclists. So there's lots of issues there that need to be uh, figured out. And let's be realistic, uh, if the city was to develop Palisades. Fifty eight acres is not gonna create a hundred and ten homes next year or the next year. In fact, in my lifetime, I would be tickled to death seeing five to ten homes uh, built up in there. Because we're not the size community. We're not Ankeny, where we can go to a cornfield, open it up where my daughter built a house. And then within five years, that whole hundred and sixty acres was full of homes. That's not gonna happen here. So we need to uh, uh, attack the, the medium income homes. We've got uh, infill lots around town that we're looking at a, at a way to prob, to try and put some housing in there. Um, we just need to continue to have meetings with the realtors and the contractors and see what we can get done. And how the city can help any one of those with the the infrastructures. Because you know, the big cost is running the water and sewer into a new area. And that's where the city comes in. So, you know, I don't know that that's a solution. But if you want me to prioritize, well's number one and well creates. Uh, running utilities down the road and Palisades is way down on my list of priorities right at the moment.
Yeah, well, it's not a black and white issue. There's a lot of gray area.
No, that's right.
All right, so uh, last question, it's not even really a question, it's just um, share any final thoughts? If there's something that I didn't ask you about that you want to make sure voters know, this is your opportunity. Steve, I'll start with you.
Okay, um, one thing I think voters need to know about city council is the best thing about city council is it's nonpartisan. Uh, we're all individuals who've come together to try to move the city in the best direction that we think we can. Uh, the most economically that we think we can. And to give the citizens of Iowa Falls some nice amenities that make you want to live here. Um, when we had discussion about upcoming uh, strategic planning. The conversation said, hey, we need to include some youth in this. As to why they're leaving, what might entice them to stay. Uh, you know, we've got good things coming. We've got broadband coming to town, which is gonna be a nice addition. Um, because some areas of town just can't get anything that's uh, very good. So uh, we just need to continue to work to make our town better. And attracted to new industry and even smaller businesses that choose to come to town. It's. I don't know, it's just um, a tough thing to do. Like I've said a hundred times, if we're not trying to grow every single day. If our council isn't trying to improve our community every single day. If the area development group isn't trying to attract somebody every single day. We're gonna go backwards in population and not forwards. And the fact that we stayed above five thousand is a win in my book. Uh, because that also ties to a lot of grants and other things that you can qualify for that I didn't know about before I got a council. And it's like, oh yeah, we gotta stay above that five thousand. That's critical. So anything we can do to continually work to attract population, keep people here. Um, add some amenities that people like, some people might not like, but there's so many people that have different tastes. So uh, to me, that's, that's our role. Keep trying to make Iowa Falls better.
All right, same thing to you, Micah. Any last thoughts or things I haven't asked you about that you want voters to know?
Um, you know, I don't know if a lot of people know me. I, I, I wasn't born here. I didn't move here until I was uh, an adult, uh, working here, but Iowa Falls has really become our home. Um, the last couple of years, my husband and I always used to, we both work out of town. Um, and we used to say, when, next time we buy a house, it'll be somewhere else. Because you know, our kids will be out of school and we'll go closer to where our offices are. And somewhere along the line, uh, things changed without us realizing it. And we did move last year and we moved uh, half a mile, nine blocks from where we were living before. And I think along with that mindset came the fact that we're no longer living in Iowa Falls. We feel like we're from Iowa Falls. Um, I even joked that maybe it was time to start looking at burial plots, which is like crazy talk for people who've lived in several different locations. But you know, I, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm the person that Iowa Falls wants to attract. I moved here and this became my home and my community. And there's many, many things I really, really like about this community and I value. Um, and I want to make sure that Iowa Falls keeps um, keeps attracting new people. And in in showcasing our, our warm, uh. We have such a giving community. I'm, we just went through RagBri and I sat in on some of those um, committees. And I was just amazed at the number of businesses that donated time and money to make something like RagBri happen. And so many communities were like, glad we don't have to deal with that. And I was just really proud of Iowa Falls and something so big that every time there's a big need, Iowa Falls really stands up to the challenge. And and I want to make sure, and I think the way to do that is to volunteer time. So this is me wanting to volunteer and give in a way that really makes sense for me with my background and my skill set. And um, I wanted to encourage other people to, to uh, to highlight their strengths and to give their time. And in ways that really work for them and their family and their lives. And I, I just, I, I'm an evangelist for Iowa Falls. Something happened. It got in my blood, I guess.
It's a river road, right? Um, well, that's, that's it for my questions, but thank you to both of you for participating and making the time for this. I really appreciate it and I know voters will appreciate it. And um, yeah, thank you. It was really nice talking with you.
I wanted to encourage everyone to vote on November second.
Yes.
All school and city elections.
Yeah.
Lots of, lots of uh, people trying to help the community. Get out there and vote for your, your candidate.
Yep, I agree. All right.